Certification posting?
Yes, the meeting was posted at the SAU office, at all three schools and online.
Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Next on the agenda is to open up for a public hearing for accepting grant monies. The Guilford School District was awarded 132,800 for the SAFE grant. So if anyone would like to speak about that, this is your chance. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Sixth grade presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I am Tara Boishman. I am the principal at Guilford Middle School. And I am pleased to present to you this evening Mrs. Kate Fox, who is our sixth grade math teacher, and some of our wonderful sixth grade students. I invited them here this evening after seeing the process of their economy project, which is a performance assessment at its true best. And I thought of all things to display, this presentation this evening would be important for everyone to see. You'll see the real-life application behind it. Thank you, parents, for having your students come tonight. It was truly just a great project and the learning along the way is absolutely...
Amazing.
Amazing. They would say amazing. So this is an interdisciplinary project where all the subjects are involved and they are going to take you through the process. This is Aria Stewart, Alexis Jackman, and Natalia... What's your last name? There you go. So go ahead.
Well, some of these... Okay, so a lot of kids made all different stuff.
Which we call a prototype.
Yep, prototype. And... Here, all even more stuff that we made, we had displayed in the lobby and throughout the main hallway. And like, I think the highest, like... Yeah, the money wise, like the cost was like $3, I think. So, and at the end of the selling, that was like two days, we had like a discount like to make the sales that we had to create, like the money wise that we created them. That was like on a sale. That was like a sales day for like all the kids, for the sixth graders.
To be sure of that.
Like $1 and like 25%.
So they all had to make prototypes. They could make it with a partner or by themselves. So we had about 50 prototypes. 16 went forward to production. And so a couple of them are up here. Show them which one's yours.
We started off with this and we ended up...
Just slime?
Yeah.
Every parent's dream.
We made a little sign on them.
Why did you change from this one to that one?
That one was bad product. It kept getting watery and like bouncy. This one we made with shank cream, alimony glue, and...
So part of the process was improving their products. So they had took their prototype, they improved it, and improved it until they were happy with it. And then... And then did a bunch of math.
Yeah. So the math we had to do is with money. And we had to make sure we knew the like unit price. So like if one of these, like how much would it cost to make one of these? Or any of these other items. And we also had to know how much we want to take out for a loan, how much it's going to cost with interest, which we have to do all that math. And...
Who supported you along the way with the loans?
The bank did.
What bank? Do you remember which bank?
Village. Oh, the American Village.
So if I can jump in, stay right here, don't go anywhere. Village Savings Bank comes in every year and the kids make a business plan, which they put forward and present to the bankers. And then the bankers grant them a loan and they charge them 10% interest. Because 10% is what a sixth grader is supposed to be able to figure out. So not because the bank wants to make any money off of us. At the end, kids don't even know this yet, but at the end, they cut us a check for all of the interest that was made. That's just supposed to be part of the learning process. So you didn't know that, did you? But American Village Savings is not trying to make money off of us.
Yeah. Also, in the process of making our business, we had to make sure we had all the items we needed. We needed to make sure we had like the websites they were on. And that was all pretty much included in the business plan. And also like how we would use like, how we would use that stuff and how much it costs.
So they had to figure out their total cost and then the unit rate of each item. And then they marked it up, right? And then they made a lot of money. One group made, I think, $110 selling these things. And there were 16 different groups. I think the group that made the least, they all returned profit this year. And the group that made the least, I think, made $15. So they were all able to pay back their loan plus interest and have a little money for profit. And so then the profit money...
The profit money is going to a charity that we chose a charity, researched it, made a plan and wrote an essay about it, like a persuasive informational essay that would, because we want to give the money to that charity. And then if the charity gets picked, it will, all the money will be given to that charity.
Do you know who picks it?
Oh.
You guys get to vote. Yeah, no, no. After they all present their essay, after they've done all that Natalia said, then they get to vote on which charity should get this, should get the money. And that's how we decide their money goes. Which charity are you researching?
I'm doing a lot of tests. They work at a sports camp. And they help people who are disabled to do sports.
And what charity are you researching?
I'm doing Salvation Army. They do many different things to help everywhere, like in the US. They like, the top three that I picked on my charity essay were... Abuse.
Okay.
Food Pantries and Rehabilitation.
Okay.
But they have like 16 fold and etc. And they won't use our donation for like getting more posters or like put up around. And for buying food, they also take canned goods.
What's your charity?
My charity is Make-A-Wish. And I chose that charity because I just think it's a good charity. Because they help kids with like critical illnesses.
I get really into researching their charities. And it's a really, it's a cool process from the beginning when they make the prototype until the end. So I wrote some, to show you, they kind of laid them out. I'm going to hold them up. So this was one. Since it's around Christmas, this is a pinecone gnome. I'm now broke. It's all worth it. It is, it is. The slime, they showed you. One group made a sugar scrub. Another group made stickers. These stickers always go over well. Kids love them for their water bottles. This... Those were the bracelets with charms that Natalia's group made. They had keychains, magnets. One group actually made airplane shooters, which was very cool. And fun. So it is from the beginning to the end, a very good project. I think they learned a lot. You learned a lot?
Yeah.
Definitely. Any questions? Or me or the girls?
Which product was the most expensive?
I...
Somebody was three, I think it was the cube. Somebody was $3.
I thought it was the bracelet. I didn't see where I wanted it.
Oh, these are paracord bracelets? And they're made out of paracord with bolts on them? I think they were over $3. And I think one group made a cube that you like flipped and flipped and flipped and it went back the other way into a cube. And that was made with a 3D printer and then they put all the cubes together. So that was cool, too. And that was about $3.50.
I thought it was $2.50.
It's kind of amazing. One of the things that they also learned was you set your price and then what happens if it's not selling? You lower it. So as long as you're making a profit. How, when do you never take it any lower?
When you're, when you're at the, when it costs to make it.
When you're at how much it costs to make it. So the unit rate.
Do you guys, in elementary school, have young inventors? Gilford has a very awesome young inventors program that you guys have.
We don't have that, I'm aware of that program. It's excellent.
And it's been an objective of mine, when I have spare time, to try to combine economics and business with the young inventors. Because I've been fortunate to be the parent of some finalists at the state and national level. And there are thousands of great ideas, like what you have in your presentation, that need to go the next step. As somebody who has a degree in economics and business, it's not taught at this level enough. And the only thing I would encourage you to look at, besides the charitable portion, which is fantastic, is that to recognize that only a percentage of your profit can actually go to charity. Because you have to reinvest in order to continue to give to charitable organizations. So building your businesses is a very important part of your long-range strategy. But I'm very impressed with the program. Thank you for doing it.
I liked how you had the whole school shop, too. My daughter's in the fifth grade and she, we like used the sugar scrub over vacation. It was a very good product. I was surprised. I didn't know what we were getting into.
And the matching lip glosses.
We didn't have that. I didn't know about that. I should have sent her just one more.
I think I saw you girls within the first hour you, they were selling the scrubs.
Yeah, I loved how you involved the whole school with it. And it sounds like such a great learning experience for sixth graders that now the fifth graders who came to the store can be excited about doing next year.
We had some pretty upset seventh and eighth graders because during that time, we had COVID and they weren't able to do this. So in passing, the seventh graders like, we didn't get to do this. Why didn't we get to do this? It was just, so the kids were all excited. The learners were all excited about it. It truly was quite a learning experience.
Thank you for sharing it with us.
Which charitable organization did you pick? Each individually? Pick a charitable organization? Or did you donate all of the profits from everybody to one?
We finished the sale the Wednesday before Christmas. And so the money hasn't even gone anywhere. The charity essays are due.
They were due last Friday.
Okay, so they were due this No Day, so we probably got a little bit of an extension. And then they will all present. And then the students will vote. And then we discuss, decide which charity to give to. It's different every year. It's amazing that it's different every year.
Awesome. Thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from December 5.
We need to make a motion first. I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 5.
My second.
Discussion?
There was just one spelling error, I think, on the second page. In the paragraph, it says, or second paragraph, last, second to last sentence, it says discussion ensued on how any, I think it was supposed to say many days per week the bus should be offered.
I noticed there was an extra space in the last paragraph. An extra return.
I had a question under Business Administrator Report regarding the last few lines about the board discussed the option of not using the $300,000 from the capital reserve. After discussion, the consensus of the board was to use the $300,000 from the reserve fund. That indicated that that was a previous vote that we did not change. Because we had voted on that before.
We had.
So I wasn't sure if that needed to be clarified. So just adding as reflected in the previous vote? Yeah, I just think it needs to reference it to make sure that there, that it's clear that we didn't have any sort of vote right then and there for that either.
Does anyone else have anything? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Public comment. Please state your name and your address when you attend the podium. The agenda is intended to give Guilford citizens a voice and the GSD an opportunity to hear directly from the citizens. This time is not intended for Q and A. Questions about programs or practices may be directed to the respective administrator during the school day. Who would like to speak? Skip.
Nice to see you all again. And I have three things.
Skip, state your name and address first, please.
Skip Murphy, Guilford.
Thank you.
First off, I want to say publicly thank you to Nicole. We had two hour-and-a-half-long phone conversations talking about Policy JAB. While it was clear that we do not see eye to eye on some of the issues, I wanted to publicly say thank you for having the phone calls. I appreciated them. And while Nicole did not speak for the board, it was good to have that conversation. So that was one thing. Second thing, however, goes to some of the materials that we were discussing. I have submitted my email at the request of the chair, a number of questions concerning Policy JAB, specifically the privacy part, the rewritten portions where it deals with the knowledge of parents as to the transgender status of their child. And I noted a number of inconsistencies and asked a number of questions. I have not heard back in a formal fashion at this point, the answers to any of those questions. So my question tonight is, will that be happening? Because while you have solved my initial issue with Policy JAB, which was the coercion of free speech, I still do not know where the board's policy stands with respect to keeping staff from telling parents what the transgender status of their child in school happens to be. It looks like that part has been removed. But when I read one line and then I read another line, doubt seems to be coming through. So I am asking formally, is there going to be a time for which, and I'm not looking to argue, I just want to know what the policy means because of the inconsistencies. So is that something that I should expect to receive?
To be clear, Skip, that was not a right to know. That was just general questions, correct?
That is correct. I figured that I would ask politely first. Because my right to know cannot ask questions. There were enough inconsistencies to say, I have questions.
I think that there was some confusion, especially on my part, and I'm answering for myself directly.
That's fine.
Because sometimes your right to knows co-mingle with your questions. So that's where there's some confusion.
That's fine. I'm always happy to answer questions.
I will re-look at the email.
Okay. The third thing is something that is bubbling up certainly across the nation, but especially here in New Hampshire. I've been contacted by a number of groups and a lot of people concerning a subscription that Guilford also has by the name of SORA, S-O-R-A. It is an online library. And some of the books that it has are rather pornographic in nature. So I lost track of time today. Normally my right to knows are fully fleshed out. So I have just handwritten one and I would like to give this to you now. Effectively, I am looking for the transaction history of the GL accounts concerning any names used for the subscription, plus the paper trail of any of the documents, be it the purchase requester, the purchase authorizer, invoices submitted by SORA, as well as the payment functions. I am also asking to find out, because I know SORA has the reports, how many times it has been accessed by each type of school, be it elementary, middle, or high school. I'm also looking for what books were accessed to it. I will tell you that some of them are rather pornographic in nature. I'm not going to read excerpts at this point. But I know that several people and groups have already contacted the AG's office and the Internet Task Force on, oh gosh, what's the last part of it? Dealing with children and pornography. So this is a serious matter. I earlier put in a right to know for the card catalog of the Guilford school system, which I will have to tell you that Guilford was one of the few that immediately, once a couple of questions were clarified, sent to me. I am sad to report that a number of books in the card catalog also are of the naughty type. That if I were to copy such sections from those books stood outside on the sidewalk, I could be arrested for child pornography distribution. I know which books they are. I would highly suggest that because other districts are now becoming legally entailed, this district may wish to look through that and make a decision as to what those books should be done, what should be done with those books. Thank you.
Skip, real quick, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First, the SORA, I'm not familiar. So could you send us some information about that as to what you are, what if, you know, regarding this pornography-type material? Because I am not familiar, so I would like to know what you're referencing. So that way I can kind of...
I will be happy to send each of you the URL for it.
Please.
There are a number of school districts here in New Hampshire and across the nation that have subscriptions, paid subscriptions, to SORA. You need a validated login to be able to get into it. I was provided by someone and I went looking. Any outsider generally cannot. It's basically being used, as far as I can tell, that if you, if somebody doesn't have, if a district does not have these books in their library directly, a teacher or staff member can refer a child to SORA and then they can access that material themselves. Which basically takes the burden off of the school district unless the subscription is turned off.
Okay, so if you could send the URL?
Yep.
And then as far as the books that you say that you found that are in the library card catalog, can you send us those titles as well?
I can send you...
Would it be too much to ask for you to actually highlight the excerpts of what you're talking about?
I have some of them. I'm actually doing this, I'm doing this across New Hampshire. Because I am getting a lot of very angry parents who are saying, how dare you present pornography material to underage children? I can send you some. I have to go back, to be honest with you. I started off with a naughty list of about 50 books. That's now grown to about 125. And over the break, I received another 75 more. So I have to go back and cross-match the books from across the different districts that I have. It also tells me, and again, I congratulate Guilford for handing me that card catalog. Because there are some districts, even though a list of books, the card catalog is not one of the exempt items in RSA 91A, the lawyers are not allowing me to access it, and I will be taking them to court. And now that the RTK ombudsman has now been appointed, his name is Tom Kerr. He officially starts the office at the end of January. I've already been in to meet with him. Without specifically referencing this, I can tell you that his statement pretty much went along, if it's not one of the exempt items in 91A3, you should be given access to that material. A list of books is not one of those exempt items. So I'm trying to give you folks a heads up. This is not something to be taken lightly. But yes, I will do the SORA. I will give you the list of books. Excerpts. And pictures. Because some of these are, while a number of them have text, some of them are called graphic novels, in other words, comic books. And they depict sexual activities of young children, 10 years old. There's one specifically called Flamer. Gender Quest is another one that... I started a political action committee earlier this fall and sent out 61,000 pieces of mail to certain districts, outlining these particular, four of the top books that we found across the districts. I don't think any of you want your children, especially in elementary-level schools, to be reading this. be reading this. This is inappropriate. So yes, I will do that. If you folks have any other questions to add to what Kyle has asked, I'm happy to get it. I think all of you have my cellphone number or my email address. Happy to provide any materials that you would like. Thank you.
One second, Skip.
Yes.
Can you, in that request, can you also provide your definitions for what classifies those books as naughty, if it's not very explicit? Like, one of the books that you just described with pictures and things like that, I just kind of want to gauge where the definitions are coming from as well.
Well, a rough estimate is...
That's kind of why I asked, if you could highlight the excerpts, then, okay, then we can at least talk about, you know, okay, this is what his interpretation is, and then if we can read it, we...
Yeah, I'm just looking, is it your interpretation, or is there like a mass interpretation? And I may be using the wrong term there.
Well, no, and I understand, because it goes back to that question, well, I can't define pornography, but I know it when I see it. So if there is a passage in a book that is describing a sexual act involving a minor child, that's wrong. If there is a graphic illustration à la comic book or graphic novel, where two boys are performing oral sex on each other, that's pornography. There are laws here on the books in New Hampshire that say that is illegal. So I'm standing here as a taxpayer, I don't want you folks to, you're gonna love what I'm about to say, not spend any more legal money than what you already have to do. So an ounce of prevention is worth a whole bag full of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, with that, I will close public comment. Student report.
Hi, my name's Sam Cheek. I think I've been to a couple of these, so it's gonna be like remember me, I'm a senior here. I'll start off talking about sports, like I usually do. So winter sports got off to a good start, and we just had our holiday basketball tournament that we do here at the middle school. Our boys team won the tournament, and our girls team lost in the finals. So that was a successful tournament. First time we've had it in three years, this would have been the fourth, so it's just good to be able to, you know, get other schools back in the gym and, I don't know, it's just, it's good to play these teams that are in the Lakes region that we don't always get to play because of divisions and school population, so I think that that's always fun. Last month, when I was here, I believe, I mentioned that NHS induction was going to be happening in December, and it went very well. I think, I believe we inducted about 22, 21 students into NHS, which puts our population at about 55, which opens us up to a lot of new opportunities, because we have so many numbers. So we can do a lot of service activities that we wouldn't be able to do if we didn't have this number of students. And lastly, for me, we did some door decorations through our advisories that we have for the holidays. I don't know who won, but it's just, it was a good way to kind of build that sense of community within the school. Just each advisory, they just kind of decorated their wooden frame of the door, you know, with paper, trees, you know, whatever they wanted to do. And so they were being judged, and I think they were gonna have the janitors or the custodians judge them after hours while they were doing their sweeps through the school, and so they were gonna vote and decide what was. That's it for me.
My name is Catherine Strickland, I haven't been here yet this year, but I was a student representative last year. First, I'm gonna talk about our first snow day, I believe, I think it went pretty well, it was the first traditional snow day. Very excited by my part, I know a lot of people went skiing, just had a fun day to relax, it was very nice, a lot of snow. We had an activity run by, I believe, the PTA called Cooperation Giving Tree, which was a fundraiser for, it was a fundraiser for like things like dog food, cat food, toys, you know, utilities for having a pet, it's gonna be donated to a local animal shelter. And we also, I believe, I think it was, yeah, this month, I believe, we had an Alice drill at the beginning. I would say it went pretty successfully. We had in this situation where the fire alarm was pulled while we were in lockdown, which made, or so we had to make sure we stayed in the classroom. Everybody was supposed to barricade, from what I heard, it was very successful. We got a lot of student feedback, teacher feedback, administrator feedback, and overall it was, it went pretty well.
Does anyone have questions?
I'm glad you guys enjoyed that first snow day, it was really nice for parents, too, to have that, so thanks for that feedback. And I just wanted to, did you both get the board packet for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I think that that will help you follow along with all of this, and especially now that we're having our student members, I just wanna acknowledge that you are part of this team, and that feel free to add in anything that comes to your mind when it comes to, you know, the take, a student's take on anything. I just want to give you that open invitation to be able to do that here at every meeting, and thank you so much for giving your time to it.
Sam, does the National Honor Society have any community projects lined up yet, or what are you thinking about, do you know?
So in the past, during either the week before Winter Carnival or the week during Winter Carnival, they used to like call it like NHS Week, and line up a bunch of events in that week where members could get their hours and where a lot of service would go on. So we've talked about doing that, and so we reached out to the, I believe, the Humane Society, we plan on reaching out to Parks and Rec Department with Herb Green, I think we're planning on reaching out to the, like, the Women Shelter in La Conia, I don't, I can't remember the exact name, but I think it's a Women Shelter in La Conia, and possibly doing like a winter clothes drag during that week before February vacation. So we don't have anything set in stone, but we're working on a lot of stuff that could, you know, do a lot of stuff around here, La Conia, Meredith, that sort of thing.
Great, thank you for doing that.
If you have any skiers in National Honor Society, I have a little ski day that's coming up.
Yeah, definitely.
With Gilmington, so we may have a few younger kids over in Gilmington on January 20th, I think it's that Friday when you have the In Surface Day, so hit me up. Just need a ski pass. All right. Absolutely, the more the merrier. It's going to be magical, that's the theme. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Awesome, thank you. So just a little bit about our January 20th Professional Development Day that's coming up. The second half of the day will be meeting with teachers and vertical teams, so K through 12, they'll meet by their disciplines, so whether it's math, social studies, English Language Arts, science, physical education, and health, those departments will be meeting. We also have administrators connecting to those different meetings and facilitating that work. At the schools, we do have some of this work happening now, it's just definitely harder to come by in smaller chunks, so the large chunk of time during the January 20th is more beneficial, more voices get to be heard, people have an opportunity to do more of the work together and not be interrupted and have to go off to class. Again, this is connected to one of the school board goals that we've written this year. The second half of the, or the first part of the day is going to be on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have two guests joining us for that morning, Alberto Ramos from Plymouth State, as well as Andre Mejaya from Exeter School District. They'll both, first Alberto will be providing a workshop for the entire staff, and then we'll have breakout sessions also, and those will be led by Alberto and Andreas, but also some of the staff within the school district will be leading sessions. We have a drug and alcohol counselor working with our high school and middle school students one day a week. This was supported through the ESSER grant, and we also have a middle school, high school mental health, licensed mental health worker coming in one day a week, again, supported by the ESSER grant. All of this is connected to school board goals as well for this year. Our work with the Budget Committee has gone very well this year. We anticipate finishing everything next, this Thursday, hopefully. Again, the public hearing for the Budget Committee's school budget is on January 12th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. In the past, we've had a posted school board meeting immediately following the public hearing, just in case there are any changes that the Budget Committee makes based on recommendations from the public, then it's an opportunity for the school board to come together and take that feedback, and whether or not we would, the school board would make any changes as well. In the past, those have been very short and/or non-existent, because the Budget Committee has agreed with the school board, and so, again, we'll post that and look forward to seeing people on January 12th. And a reminder that deliberative session for the schools is on Thursday, February 9th, at 7:00 PM, again, in the auditorium as well. And similar, we have posted a meeting prior to the deliberative session in the past, board members, administrators have met at the beginning of the meeting with the moderator, just to go over kind of what's gonna happen that evening, answer any questions that people may have, gone into deliberative session, and then, again, meet afterwards, just to make sure if there were any changes to the budget on the floor, and how do we move forward with that. So we will go forward and post those meetings as well. Two additional requests for ESSER III grants for the board to consider. First, the late bus, late bus would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, excuse me, three days a week. We would not run a late bus on early release days. We would have the pickup for the late bus at 4:15, and currently, we're thinking we would have pickup in front of the high school, as well as the elementary school, depending on who the riders would be for that particular day. We would need to have people sign up, thinking that not by 10 o'clock in the morning in each school, people could sign up if they're gonna take the late bus. That gives us and the bus company an opportunity to make sure that we have drivers to support that, but also so that we can make sure where the drop-offs would be. We would do that, if you count out, if we start on January 17th and we count out for the remainder of the school year, get us into June, and exclude those early release days, we would have 65 days, and that would be $84 per day, which is $5,460. One of the things that, when I wrote my report, and I was reflecting on that later, that we did not take into consideration is, at the high school, we have an after-school person that sits at the front desk, so that person is responsible for the activities that kind of happen within that front office in the evening, and also kind of gathering those Gilmington late bus riders and getting them on the bus in the afternoon. And so we would have that person do that for the high school as well, for Guilford students, the elementary school, I think we would be all set till 4:15 is my understanding, is that right, Danielle?
Well, there would be some, if they were staying till 4:15, there would be a staff member.
There'd be a staff member there. The only place where we wouldn't have a staff member is at the middle school, and so if we were to pay a person one hour of time at $32 an hour, again, these are rough estimates for that person at the middle school, that would be an additional $2,080. So the total would be $7,540 for the after-school bus program for the Guilford students, if that's what we would want to do. And then next, another opportunity for professional development. We've learned a little bit about Kagan Cooperative Learning Training. We would, initially, we've, we surveyed staff to see if staff were interested in doing a five-day summer workshop, and we didn't get a lot of takers on that. We've, Katie's gone back to Kagan and talked to the people at Kagan Training, and they would be willing to do a two-day training, so we do have interest in people doing a two-day training this summer, and then we would have one day when a coach would come back to us later in the school year for the 23, 24 school year. So we're asking for consideration of $16,000 from the ESSER III funding. This would cover the training, books, software, as well as action plans for the participants, the trainers' travel expenses, as well as the day of coaching in the 23, 24 school year. Again, connected to ESSER III, Katie and Amy, I'll say, are really working on a spreadsheet for the funds use of our ESSER IIIs. This is something that we have to report to the Department of Ed, and it's due on the 13th of January, and so we will, I think, be wrapping that up maybe this week, but certainly early next week, and we'll have that to share with the board, as well as posted on our website. Just a big thank you also to both the Guilford Police, as well as the Fire Department. They support us in many ways, certainly through our Alice drills and Alice training, but also they support us when we have a, something that happens similar to December 8th, where we have this hoax that went around the state, and people are calling in, whether it's bomb threats or active shooter threats, and our police, we had at least one, if not two, police officers in all of our schools each day that day. The chief and I were in contact at least five or six times that day, so really felt supported. When I've talked to the principals, it's not ideal not to have an SORO, but we felt supported, I think, from the local police department. The police are showing up at arrivals when parents are dropping off, or buses are dropping off, also departures, they're in our schools. We're learning all the new police officers that we have in the Guilford School District, or Guilford Town, which is good as well, but really just thank you to them and all the work that they do to support and protect us. Happy to take questions and go through those, any of those requests as well.
All right, I'm gonna go backwards of the list. I have a question regarding the bus, because I reflect in our meeting minutes that it was 82, 42 per day, but now it's $84 a day. Is there a reason for the difference?
I guess I thought it was 84, I'm sorry. I will go back and look, and there's been no change from them.
Okay, I know that when we made the motion, we motioned for three days a week from January to the end of the year last time, so I think we're fine on that aspect, I was just curious on dollar amount piece. Do you need a motion to pay somebody for the middle school?
So yes, for a middle school office staff person to stay after, which would be $2,080 at most, I think, up to, I don't know that it would cost that much, but at least that much, I would say, at the most.
I'm to approve 2,000, up to $2,100 to pay a staff member at the middle school for...
$2,180.
Oh, is it 180? It was 2,080.
It is 2,080.
2,080?
Yes. I don't know.
I moved to approve 2,100, up to $2,100 for a staff member at the middle school to cover the late bus days.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just to make sure that we are communicating, right, this is a pilot program for a year, and so we see how it goes before we have... This is a pilot program for a year, and so we see how it goes before we have to invest any further.
I would go right to the end of this school year.
To the end of this school.
Not for a year.
Sure.
I don't know that it's necessary. I think middle school children, especially fifth graders, probably feel more comfortable in the middle school as opposed to walking into the high school. But I think my seventh grade daughter would feel a little anxious about walking into a high school by herself at the end of the day.
And they don't currently do that now, they walk around the school.
They walk out on the outside to get the bus at the end of the day, and generally, they're supported by one of the administrators when they do that.
And I know I would feel more comfortable if there was at least somebody making sure that they'll make it over there.
Also, thank, we don't know how many kids, so there's the potential for some mischievousness to happen in that walkover, so it probably would be best to have them supervised. I also want to hear from the students what they thought about this bus pilot program, if you guys had any input about it or any thoughts.
I mean, I definitely know in the high school that Gilmington kids use it. So, I mean, I think it's a good idea to at least give her a try. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to give her a shot for the rest of this year.
I think the same. I think it's a great idea, because I, I take the Gilman late bus a lot, and it's incredibly helpful, because parents can't always pick kids up and, and I know in Guilford it's a little easier, but I think that this will really help.
Thanks.
All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
One more, so the, are there any updates on the SRO?
I have not had an official update from the chief of police. I know that he thought he had somebody and then all of a sudden, they didn't take the job. And so, I think he's still working on that. I know that they don't have all their positions filled at the police department as well. Today, actually, we saw Alyssa Rackster. She was in as a part-time, she's working, I think, as a part-time employee for the police department. So, I, I think they're, they're trying to fill their positions. And once they are able to fill all their positions, then I think then we'll have a better feel as to what the SRO job looks like.
I had a question. What, on the Kagan Cooperative Learning Training, what is that? I'm sorry for not knowing if I should know.
No, that's okay. I'm going to defer to Katie. Katie's had quite a few conversations with them, and she can talk a little bit about that.
So, Kagan is the company, they offer multiple trainings, some that are on instructional practices, but then others that are more focused on like classroom management and discipline. So, we're looking at one that's more for instructional practices and models. So, it teaches the teachers different structures, as they call them. So, think of it like instructional strategies that you can use in all content areas, and they're really focused on learner engagement and cooperative activities within the classroom.
Part of the reason for my question is, in our, in our GEA collective bargaining negotiation, we were asked as a board in our town to look at supplying ongoing continuing education. Would this be worth CEU credits or is it?
Yeah.
Is it a college-level training class for college credit?
No, it's not college level.
It's just professional development?
It's professional development. I don't think they, I don't believe that they offer the option for like graduate credits, but I also did not look into that.
I, I'm curious to investigate that with you specifically at some point.
I can share some information with you.
All right, great.
Katie, can I ask you a question too? Is this going to be for voluntary this year, or is there like a long-range plan to roll it out at all levels?
So, this, the tentative dates that we have for this are in June, and that's based on some feedback that we had gotten from some of the initial surveys that we had put out. So, it's in June after the school year has ended, so it is a voluntary training. The, as Kirk shared, the initial feedback was that the five-day training was too much for the demands that it puts on professionals and once they have, you know, they're out of work and they have children and other jobs in the summertime. So, that's why we cut back to the two days. So, it's not mandatory. We've done similar trainings in the past with Kagan. Our hope is that there'll be a lot of interest this time around, and then also having that coaching feature where that coach will come back during the school year and actually will work with teachers that want them to come in. I think, not a value tip, we'll go into the classroom and watch the teachers implementing some of the structures and just provide feedback. So, we feel like that model will be beneficial for like the accountability and the continual input of the structures, but beyond that, we haven't planned anything further.
So, if it's voluntary, what is the minimum number of participants?
This is based on 20.
On 20? And if you only, what, what is your threshold if you do not hit the 20? So, if you, if you only have, let's say, five people sign up, are you still going to push through with this program?
No. So, this, the, the minimum that we went with, with the 20 was based on the survey results that we have so far from staff that we feel secure with. If anything, I feel like the number could increase. And if the number were to increase in participants, the only part of this figure that might change is the textbooks part. The, the cost to have the trainers come to us and even the coaching day is a flat fee based on the theory. So, potentially, if we have everyone that wants to do it, we might have to come back and say, we need a little bit more, but that's a good thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we making a motion?
I'm looking at everybody.
All right. I make a motion that we spend $16,000 to offer the Kagan Cooperative Learning Training this summer for staff using ESSER III funding.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for the bus?
No, we had actually made a motion based on the number of days last meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. So, I was looking through here, trying to find it. Resource management, board members, make sure that you mark your calendars for January 12th and February 9th.
So, are we definitely going to have board meeting on 1/12 at 6:45?
Yes, we'll post a meeting, we've posted meetings before, no, afterwards for the public hearing beforehand for the deliberative session. So, deliberative session is in February, the February 9th date. So, we would do something at 6:45 on February 9th. And we would do something immediately following the public hearing on January 12th.
If, if we need to on January 12th to...
If nothing, if nothing changes, we'll just, we won't have the meeting.
Okay. I'll try to make it up tonight, but I have a member supervision.
Families and Communities.
I'm assuming that training for diversity, equity, and inclusion, like, can attend?
Absolutely. Any board member can attend. That'd be great. Yes.
Excuse me? Can't hear back here?
I just asked if that 20th training for diversity, equity, inclusion, if that's something I could attend.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I have a couple comments, questions, kind of fleshing some stuff out here on that. Trying to go into this with an open mind. You know, I, I asked previous meeting, you know, more about it. I'm trying to do my own research and with an open mind and, you know, just trying to, I guess, understand the benefits of the DIE. Everything that I see, really, it's, they're big, the criteria that is being used, and I've looked into both Alberto Ramos and Andreas Mahia. You know, the, the criteria is really these immutable characteristics, gender, sex, sexual identity, race, kind of at the expense of merit. So, I'm, it's troubling to me, the more that I research this. And so, then I was looking a little bit further, and as I stumbled upon Andreas Mahia, I really do believe he has a conflict of interest to be coming as a speaker to our teachers. And the reason is because he is currently a sitting board member of the Seacoast Black Lives Matter chapter, which is a political organization. So, my objection would be that it is politic, that he's a very political person that we're bringing into an apolitical environment. So, I would actually like to make a motion to uninvite Andreas Mahia. If there are contractual obligations to pay him, obviously, we would do that. But I would like to motion that we uninvite him based on his, my perceived belief of a conflict of interest, that I would not want to endorse as a school board BLM and have, have that be, again, something that we would be endorsing politically. So, I have, that would be my thought on that. I did.
Discussion.
And for what seems, seems like a very nice guy. I mean, but again, I just believe a conflict of interest is, is something that we don't want to, I don't believe we should be endorsing that. I know a couple of years ago, we were, this board was solicited by some, I don't remember if they were students, working with an activist organization that tried to get us to endorse BLM, and we unanimously rejected that because, again, we are an apolitical institution here, and we shouldn't be taken sides in these political debates. I went to the Seacoast BLM page. They are openly, you know, endorsing candidates for certain races, you know, so they're very, very political, which is, again, why I would like to not have this gentleman attend.
Kyle, I understand your perspective and your reasoning to keep politics out of this. But I know I'm not prepared to support a vote in this manner unless I can research him, which I didn't, so shame on me for that. But also, I would want to have maybe the agenda or know a little bit more about what was happening during the training and what his role was in that training in order to make an informed decision. So, I know I'm not prepared to vote in favor of that motion, but that's just my opinion or stance on it.
Where this is, where this is on the 20th, do we have an agenda yet for what the breakout sessions are that we can?
We do. We haven't received, I don't know that we've received their actual presentations yet. We have talked though, that we would have the presentations vetted through our legal counsel and make sure that what we're doing is on the up and up, that it's not political, it's apolitical. I, I've only heard and met, I haven't even met him in person, but have heard him speak. Andreas was with three other, there's only four diversity, equity, and inclusion staff members in public schools in the state of New Hampshire. Exeter is one of the school districts, Oyster River is another school district, Manchester, and Concord are the other two school districts. And there was a panel of the four of them, and I had heard Andreas speak, and it was not a political commentary. It was just about, again, the sense of people belonging in schools, belonging in communities. And so, what his message is, I'll let Katie talk a little bit about that on the 20th.
Yeah, so his breakout sessions, so 45-minute sessions on intervening in the moment. So, as situations arise in the passing of a hallway, how you handle that situation, and you have a protocol. I had seen Andreas present at another conference this year already, when he spoke about the work that he's been doing with his superintendent in Exeter, and I felt that the, the message and the approach was, was, was inclusive, and I felt like that was the approach that we were taking here in terms of fostering really inclusive and communities of belonging. And that's really the approach that we're taking in all of the sessions that we're looking to put together. And we certainly can share that agenda ahead of time, but the descriptions are being composed right now for all four of the sessions.
It certainly wasn't insinuating that he was going to come in skewing political, you know, ideologies. It was just more or less, when he took the extra job, he refused to resign from that position as a board member for BLM. So, to me, it's ingrained in who he is, and so I think that there could be the perception from teachers or community members that, hey, we're bringing in a guy from BLM, and the perception is that we are endorsing that. So, I just, I think there are other people that could probably speak to inclusiveness, I can't say that word, plural, inclusiveness, other than him. And I think we could avoid that perception that we are endorsing a, a political personality.
I think what's a benefit to having someone like Andreas come in is the fact that he's working in a lot of the public schools currently in this role. And so, I think that there is benefit to bringing someone in who's doing that work actively in terms of like within the districts, creating the, those environments. And as Kirk shared, there are few directors of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the state has really, has taken them on board to make them resources to other districts because they're, they're, they're in the trenches doing the work and supporting teachers. And that's something that we know our staff really would appreciate.
Certainly understand too, that blind someone who is in the trenches in the public school doing that, and that there aren't a lot of other people that you possibly could have, you know, checked off those same boxes. I just think for this particular individual that, that the perception isn't something that I want, would want the district to endorse.
We, we had a similar situation. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, we have to agree with Katie on this, that I think it's impressive that he is doing the work for Exeter School District, so it's not just like we're hiring somebody to do training from a political organization. This person has invested their career in working for a school district, and I think that that's an important part of this. And there's lots of people who work in our school district who also take part in political activities outside of their work within our school district, but they're able to check that when they come in to do the important work that's required in settings like this. I feel like we all do that, we accomplish that, even though we might come from different political backgrounds, we're able to come here and realize that it's a non-political job, and that's not even to show up and do what's right by staff and students and parents and taxpayers.
My example for our local situation involved a BLM endorsement by a teacher in the school. And my, my position on it, in our, from our board and with a lot of background research done, specifically on BLM, is, is a highly engaged political organization. And if the shoe was on the other foot and pick your, your anecdotal organization, it probably wouldn't be supported or advocated for. The idea that inclusion and the BLM thought process can be separated is, isn't realistic because they're, they are part of the same fabric, so it's understandable that he is part of that organization, but that organization is outwardly aggressively political. So, if there's no balance to the, to the, or to the... So if there's no balance to the, to the, or to the ideology of what is being, you know, imposed in the training or seminar, then it's, it's a problem that you guys really should wrestle with. And, and the way we dealt with it is we basically had to say, if you can't accept the alternative points of view, you really have to be apolitical. And, and school board is supposed to be apolitical. I understand Nicole's point quite well. We all have to be apolitical. But I believe the trainers of, the educators need to be apolitical. And this clearly is not the case. If Kyle was right, I agree with Jessica, that maybe more information, because I don't know the guy, but I would take your word for it if I had to.
But I think that when we went through our exercise in Gilton, we went back and, and really dove in on, on the code of conduct, that all educators are, are, I want to say force, but they must, thank you, are held to and are accountable to. That's the word, that's the word is accountable. And so if he is working in a public school setting, then he is certainly held accountable to those same standards. And so then that, that brings me back to Katie's point of if he's working in a public school setting and, and coming forward with this training, then he is certainly very understanding of what his responsibilities are in this training and, and what he needs to impress upon those teachers that are accountable to their code of conduct and what, what they have to be representing in their daily processes. So I, I think, I, I agree with, with Jessica, you know, I, I didn't, when I read through this report, I didn't, I apologize that I didn't come to this and say, oh, we're going to have a vote on this particular item. It just didn't jump off the page to me to say that. So I, I didn't research it in that fashion to go down that page. Not that I don't, I just believe what you're sitting here telling me, Kyle.
You can just go right on their website. He's on, he's a board director. He's a picture.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, but I'm just, I, I'm not disbelieving, I'm just saying that.
I didn't do any research, it was pretty easy to find.
So I'm just not prepared to, to vote on, on his record. But, but in looking at it, I, I like Audrey's approach of, of saying, we can all sit through that training and, and call the timeout or ask for that agenda ahead of time and say, no, this is not for us, if, if that be the case. I think I'd, I'd rather go down that path than pull the plug on the training altogether. I don't know how you would get somebody else in. I guess it's my next question, like what is your parachute plan if, if, if this were not?
It's Katie and I.
Yeah, that, that's my next question is.
Isn't the motion just to uninvite one of the speakers though, not, not to end the program? You're not, you're not opposed to the program itself?
No, not at this point, no, it's just a one individual.
Sure, it's January 20th though, that's the, I mean, so.
Which is why I would have done a different, had a different approach to it.
I, yeah, I guess it's come to us before. I don't know that we had the presenters because I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I know that we talked about the training, right? The, what the training would be about on that day. And I, I could see how you're, it could be very problematic to find someone now to fill the shoes. I'm not saying that, I mean, I, I didn't do the research upon each individual. I didn't think we were voting on it. I just assumed it was kind of a update to the board on what we had discussed previously. So I'm not prepared to, to vote in favor of the motion tonight because I haven't done that. Not that I don't trust you, it's just, obviously, the district or the teachers feel that there is a need for this kind of training or the leadership team does and they've advocated for it. And we've kind of supported it up to this point. So I would be in favor of seeing exactly what was included in it. Kirk said that they were going to have it vetted by legal, so that makes me feel more comfortable that it would be appropriate and not be pushing political viewpoints. I don't know about, that I can attend on the 20th, but I think that's also a good option that we could participate as well.
The only other comment I would give is that you're, we are not Exeter. So my esteemed colleague made the point that there is a code of conduct. I don't know what theirs is, I, but we do presumably know what ours is. And we are not them. So there's a reason, there's only four equity inclusion people in the state. And that's not because of finances, because we have different viewpoints on the situation. So the code of conduct is for all teachers, all staff members of the state of New Hampshire. It's the same here in Guilford for myself as it is for the superintendent in Exeter, for the superintendent in Gilton as well.
So how it related to our policy was not.
Your policy, your policy is different than the code of conduct for the Department of Education.
Thanks for that clarification, yeah.
And I would also add that this is in line with our goals that we worked to lay out in the summertime. And this is just fulfilling those goals of what we want to bring to our district. So I would have to disagree with, that it's not in line with what the vision is. This is something that we've wanted to bring to the district. And I agree, it shouldn't be a political thing. And I trust that the people that we have coming to present, that our administrators have researched and invited to our district and going to vet the presentation, that they're going to deliver something that is beneficial for everybody.
Thanks for making that point, Nicole. That was a question I had was when did you set the goals? And I'm a recent addition, so it was a summer goal setting for the board? In the July, I think it was, the Guilford Board takes the month of July and meets and generally talks about what the goals are for the, for the next year. So that's when those goals were kind of come together or put together. And then I think it was approved maybe in September, by September, the goals.
That's good to know.
Did it improve specifically diversity, equity, inclusion as a professional development?
It was professional development that included this type of training.
It specifically says diversity, equity and inclusion in your goals. I appreciate you doing the research on it, Kyle, because I think that is incumbent on us as school board members to be informed about things like that. So it's a good debate.
The only thing that I would say then, yeah, okay, this was approved as a goal, doing more research since then, right? Didn't have these particular names in front of us at that point. So it's like, okay, new information's presented, new decisions are made then. So again, at that point, there would have been no researching this individual because we wouldn't have even known that that was a potential presenter. So that's the only thing I would, you know, kind of counter that with.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning, I, I know that you are for any type of training that includes, includes these, I'm, I'm sorry, let me take it back. Not any type of training, but training that includes this agenda for diversity inclusion. So it's not a question of the training itself per se, it is truly just a question of the person that's presenting it, making sure that their political and moral compass is pointed in the same direction that our school district is in.
More or less. I'd say the more that I learn though, the less hammered I am with it.
The person or the training?
With, with DIE as a whole.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I will admit that prior to a lot of this, I didn't have a lot of the, the information that I've been, you know, looking at and seeing different school districts, what they've implemented. So as I look at more, the less thrilled I am. But to, to your point, yes, by and large, it's this specific individual.
Can we have that agenda before the January 12th potential meeting? Is that possible? So that way people can do their research on that piece and if we have to make a last minute, it will be vetted by the attorney at that point as well.
That, I don't think so. So a couple of things I'm thinking is we could certainly get an agenda to you by January 12th. Having us pull out with somebody on January 12th feels like that's eight days out. That, there's no way we would find a person. It is most likely that we won't find a person to replace this person now. So, so I think it's probably best to just tell us now if we're not going to have that individual so that we can try to make plans to go forward.
Can I ask a second question? If we're most concerned with this one session, if I probably could, this is a session that he has already provided within his district, I can probably, I can talk with him about having that ahead of time, having that specific one vetted sooner? And potentially we could have that one through maybe around the 12th, what day is it? If that's the, if that's where the majority of the concern is.
Well, I think perception is another big component of it, that he is a sitting board member of this highly political organization. So I think that's part of it, but I think, I don't think that would change my viewpoint on this particular individual. So again, it would be just the perception of bringing in this individual who is a, again, a sitting board member of a, I can't remember, for years, taking my words and just kind of just.
It's the person, not the training.
Yes, at this point, I'd like to.
We're gonna go with seventy, seventy thirty on that.
But I like what Audrey said about attending. I don't know if I can, but if you could, then obviously then, or if we can get an agenda or so on and so forth, that certainly would help me understand more and kind of put more of these puzzle pieces together to kind of, again, I'm, I'm learning, I'm trying to understand, you know, the whole concepts here and how it actually is beneficial.
Okay, so that's why my suggestion is the, if that one specific training is one in particular, that one we could probably provide you with ahead of time to preview before I can have everything compiled for the entire.
Right.
So would that be?
Well, I think that would be great, but I, I still think that I would go back to if this training was being given, if the exact same training was being given by a different individual, my concerns would probably be to a degree. But I think that because the individual, I don't, I think it's almost irrelevant what the content is, at least in my perspective. And I know a lot of people that I would, you know, that parents and constituents within the town would have that same perspective.
Katie, I think that would be appreciated so that way the rest of us board members can do our due diligence in making sure that we're providing a proper training or endorsing a proper training.
Andreas, yes. Alberto?
Yeah, I think, I feel like we've talked about Alberto here several times.
We've talked about Alberto, but Andreas has been since the last board meeting. So that's why his name hasn't come up prior to today. Uh, this is our only full K-12 day.
It's really more or less about, if I'm understanding you correctly, based on my own personal experiences with it when we were dealing with it, is to not be endorsing somebody who's got a, a component to their resume, basically, because of the potential impact or feelings of people on the other side of whatever argument that he's endorsing. Say the police officers that want to be defunded by BLM or whatever. So do you, maybe, it's safe to say Katie didn't pick him because of his affiliation, I believe that. But it's a, it's a paradoxical road you're traveling on. How do you get the training without the trainer? And his resume is, is, is full of what it is. Do you make a statement as a board that says, you know, it's not an endorsement, you know, I, I don't know. It doesn't seem like he can cancel the training. The only option would be to uninvite him or maybe this is enough of a public statement that at least portion of the board doesn't endorse, you know, that side of his resume, so to speak. Trying to give you a creative solution.
Well, I, I don't, it's not that I endorse him. I, I, endorsing what the leadership team is recognizing as a need for training. And I, again, admit, I didn't do due diligence with researching the person. So I don't want it to be a message that because I'm not willing to vote on asking him not to participate in, based on what I've learned tonight, that I'm endorsing his belief system because I do not.
I'll be perfectly honest in saying that the more I've learned about this diversity, equity and inclusion, I, I don't endorse that training, actually. The more I learn about it, it does not give me the warm and fuzzy sense. I, I really, I wish I'd probably done more homework before now, but the past week that I've read about it, I don't really like what it, it's about. And I don't want to get too far into it, but, because I, again, I don't know enough about it, but what I've learned, I don't really like.
So I think ultimately too, that's why we come together as a board and that's why we make decisions as a group, because one of us can feel really, really strongly about something. Like I've been the person that has felt strongly about it and you guys were like, no, it's not that big of a deal. And I feel like maybe in this situation, and that's okay, we're supposed to make decisions as a group. And so we do have a motion on the floor and it's like, I think it is good to decide this as a group. The training is coming up, the people are booked and this is part of our teachers' calendar. This is something that they're depending on. If, if the board makes a group decision to cancel the speaker, then we probably should let him know far in advance so that there is a chance that we can get somebody else. Or if we want to move forward with it, then make a decision to move forward with it and go with the plan.
I, I, come listen, I, I'm with Nicole and Drew. I think that obviously Katie has gone through and, and listened and attended this training and has already previewed it. So it's not that she's going into this blindly. This is something that she purposely selected for our district, knowing that this is, would meet our goals. If, I think that if she can get the training ahead of time so that people can preview it and become comfortable with it, so that they can deliver the message to constituents and let them know that this is the message that is about to be delivered, that will make this all better for everyone else out there in the world too. I, I understand, we went through something in Gilton. It's not, the message, I, you never want the work to be overshadowed by a piece of somebody's resume. And we went through this before and we had to pull the plug on it because it started to become overshadowed. But if that was a longer term project, it wasn't just a one, one time day of professional development. And so I, I trust in our administrative team. If we can get those pieces of information out, the sooner the better. And I think that there's a nice offset with Alberto Ramos coming as well. So I'm comfortable if our administrative team is vetting it through legal as well.
The motion on the floor is to uninvite Andreas Mejia? Sorry if I butchered that. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion does not pass.
Pouring a border, please.
Pouring a border, please.
We have three.
You had?
We have two extensions, three, four, and one against.
You had two, yeah, you had two, two, four, one against, and four abstaining.
So two, four, and one against. Motion passes.
With extensions?
Abstentions are a null vote, they do not count.
No, it's a null vote. Either yea, nay, or if you abstain, you abstain.
Yeah, it's a null vote, it doesn't count. A nu, an extension is a null vote, it doesn't count one way or the other.
Correct.
So the motion passes.
Correct.
Make another motion.
Can I just, I just want to clarify because this involves money. So for, for Gilmoreton, we would need to abstain because this is a District Five money event. Correct, correct. Okay, I just want to put that out there to explain our extension.
I wanted to, I wanted to be able to collect more information, but if that means disinviting this presenter, then I will oppose disinviting her.
Have to make a motion?
I make a motion to, um, not uninvite Andres Mejia, until we learn more information that Katie is going to get and provide with the board.
I'm running that through my head on how that's actually a subject.
Negative, so I, I make a motion that we keep, I'm rewording the motion. So I make a motion that we can keep the training for January 20th as is, with Katie getting us, uh, the information on the presentation by Andreas, before we make a final decision on uninviting him.
Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. I am going to be, and I'm going to apologize to the rest of the board and to the community, I'm going to be looking into more of the extension piece, um, to make sure that that was done correctly. I was trying to frantically type that out on my phone, it's just not. Cause I want to make sure that that is done correctly, whether it's an official motion or a motion to redact your previous, I'm not sure how that is really, truly.
So we will work on getting the agenda together for people's review as well as present, two presentations, or maybe six presentations.
Thank you, Katie.
Nick, and does that matter just as a point of order? Because if it's true that the extensions are null, then you have two, you have two opposing votes. So with that, that's an interesting situation, okay.
Right, so that's why I'm unclear of if it's a, I redact, somebody's trying to redact their vote, or if it's truly another motion and the one with the majority oversees the previous one for their counterparts. That's what I'm unclear of.
And we didn't want to oppose collecting information about the speaker, which is why I abstained. But now I see that we had to put that motion, we need to oppose that motion in order to do what we want to do.
We'll get that answer as quickly as possible. All right, principals report.
Oh, you're first.
I'll just submit my report as we're in, if there's any questions.
You want to have any questions for Danielle?
No questions, just a comment, you're just doing a wonderful job.
Oh, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, appreciate that.
When does the one school, one book go out?
Um, this Friday.
Nice.
So keep it under your hat, you know, because you have the name of the book.
Okay.
That's gonna be mailed this Friday.
Top secret.
Yes, very top secret.
Tara?
Um, as we ended the first trimester, um, one of the exciting pieces for us at GMS was we were able to hold our first student recognition assembly. Students were recognized on, um, the Porterville learner attributes. And also, um, they were also recognized for following our school-wide expectations. As this is the first year we've implemented, um, multi-tiered systems of support at the middle school. Um, one of our other showcases was certainly our economy project, which the students spoke to you about tonight. Um, we also had our food drive end and we're pleased to announce that we collected eight hundred and seventy cans. Um, and our students in Mr. Magzal's room were rewarded with a pizza party for Mix 94.1.
Anyone have questions for Tara?
Uh, no questions, just a couple of comments. I am so happy to see this Lego robotics program up and running again. So I, you know, I just, I, I know you're new. This is something I've been advocating for, for a long time, getting this, so you'll have no bigger advocate than myself. If there's anything financially, whatever, please bring it. We will do everything we can to support this.
Thank you, the students are certainly glad to have this as well. Because it's something that they've been missing out on for the past few years too, along with, um, well, due to, due to COVID and, um, our team is actually placed in both competitions, so it's very exciting.
It's just an awesome theater program for the high school.
Anybody else?
Did the middle school and the elementary school go through the same thing that a bunch of other districts went? With the absentee situation with the flu and the, all that?
Not as bad as Gilmoreton.
Okay.
We, we had a number, but nowhere near what the numbers.
Yeah, I was just curious. Situation, all right.
Anthony?
The students don't like thunder, so.
No, I need more time. Okay. Quick research on Robert's Rules of Order. And then it looks like it is a motion to reconsider. Um, it can only be made by a member of the prevailing side of a previous vote. If seconded and passed, it rescinds the previous vote and brings the motion back for discussion. That is what my quick research is stating. So you would need a motion to reconsider.
Need a motion to reconsider Kyle's original motion.
Of the prevailing side of the previous vote.
Why would you then have reconsidered if you were on the prevailing side? That doesn't make any sense. I quite, quite, and I don't think it off on our rabbit's trail, but do we even have a policy that says that we follow Robert's rules? We do?
Do have a policy. It doesn't say strictly follow Robert's rules, but it does mention, it does reference Robert's rules.
But we're not gonna box our, because Robert's rules are very, very convoluted and dragged out. So I just want to make sure we're not holding ourselves to some standard that we're not meeting.
Right. Like I said, quick, quick look. I will absolutely be looking into it more. It's actually the first time I've had it happen in the five years I've been on the board, so.
And I, and I guess it just goes back to Nicole's point of, I thought we needed more information. So that's why I abstained, because it wasn't clear on how to move.
That is how I'm understanding how that works, by reading this. I'm welcome to share, you want to look at it?
I think the role of the board is scary, I would, I think that being a day, that's all that matters.
But I also want to make sure that it's reflected properly and that we are following the proper protocol. So I'm a big firm believer in the rules. So then in that case, do you want to make an official motion to, or state that that was an official motion to rescind? Reconsider?
My motion was an official motion to reconsider the previous motion.
And I'm gonna go with Nicole and second that. So we don't have to go through the whole thing again. Director of curriculum, Katie?
I have nothing additional to add.
Business administrator?
Uh, I have nothing additional to add, but I mean, we do not have any budget journal entries for December. So it's not missing, it just, there wasn't many. There'll be a few for just, uh, January. We've got more advanced revenues for this year, so I would think journal entry for all those revenues.
I would like to make a motion to accept a SAFE grant for $132,800.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I didn't know if you wanted to break them out by school, um, so that the high school could be broken out separately for Gilmoreton. But we could do that if you wanted. And I have those numbers if you want. High school's amount is 22,500. Middle school amount is 79,800. And the elementary school is 30,500.
Nicole, do you want to amend?
Yep.
Is it good with two specific ones? Is that why they could go? Thank you.
I will amend my motion. I make a motion to accept the SAFE grant money for the high school for $22,500.
All those in favor? Until you make eye contact, Drew, let me know. No opposed and no extensions. Thank you.
I move to accept the SAFE grant money for the middle school for $79,800, for the elementary school for $30,500.
It's Audrey for the second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
I did have a quick question for Amy. The language on the board article, what were the too many questions that legal is saying be questioned by the community?
Showing all those individual dollar amounts. Because it hasn't been a past practice of the district to have that one. But with that, it raises questions to why, and it's a motion to amend something.
Well, they, they could do that anywhere though, right? I think it's, in the name of transparency, I think it's a good practice. I mean, I just think, just because it hasn't been done before, doesn't mean why you shouldn't do it now. I think it really does help aid the voter in understanding, um, you know, the budget. I, I, I still support putting it in there.
All the documentation for supplement, I mean, handouts for, that will show the breakout. So it will be part of the conversation as far as those presentations go. It's just that grant total. I'm happy to go back to the attorney.
Well, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse and I don't want to have to pay more attorney fees to do so. Um, I, I guess I'm just kind of of the mindset that just because, hey, it hasn't been done before, we shouldn't do it. And, you know, I think it's good when the taxpayers question things, cause then it gets them to understand the process more. And maybe you'll get some of those folks who have typically been, um, against the school budget to see, oh wait, okay, it's actually a million plus dollars less because we have the federal funds, et cetera. So I don't think questions are necessarily bad. But again, I don't, I think at this point I'm okay going forward the way we've been doing it. You know, I would say if I'm here next year, I mean, maybe that's a conversation that we can have again to, again, I just think it's just more transparent and, and it helps the voter understand, okay, we're not raising the 27 million for taxes, we're only raising the, whatever, 26 and change. Just my thinking. So I was just curious what the attorney had said. If you could, that would be great, thank you.
You're also posting that online, correct? For the packet you're creating for those that don't attend the delivered session and.
He also did state that we have to be pulling the graphic back. So that's the second.
All right. Policy first read.
For policy J H, there was just one thing that Jess and I noticed. And it's on page three, second paragraph. Last sentence says to an excused absence in honor, it should say our student information system. So the paragraph starts off, it's at the top of, um, if an absentee student is. Yes, yes. Middle paragraph, last sentence.
The only reason we suggested that was because that almost what we use now, but if it was to change.
Yeah, it's been a goal hold.
I just have a question about the student board members BBBF. I read the RSA and I cross-referenced, I think it's 164, I think is the original one, um, that I cross-references as well. There's nothing, 194, sorry. There's nothing in there about timeframes for the student, like any other rules that come into play for minors attending things. Do we, have we put out like a time limit or, um, a guideline for them? So they're not staying out, because sometimes we do have meetings that run late, unfortunately. I just want to make sure that they're adhering to it like we're supposed to, but we're also abiding with the fact that they have to get home.
When I inquired about that, um, I was told whatever we use, or whatever the school board uses as a, um, kind of a procedure to excuse board members, that's what you should use with, um, the student board members as well. So if a student, if a board member has an appointment at, um, nine o'clock and they need to leave by eight forty-five, they may tell the chair prior to, and, and they would just kind of excuse themselves during the board meeting. Likewise, we should have the students do that as well. I'll try to connect with them next time to make sure that they know that.
Okay. We also have a two-hour limit in our policy for, um, board meetings. So we.
I think it's three hours, actually.
Is it three?
It's three hours.
It is three hours.
To the public timeframe.
So I wonder if we could use that as part of, put some, you're asking for a limit in this policy?
No, I'm asking if there is a limit out there that we're supposed to be adhering to. Like you have state laws for 14, 15, 16-year-olds that can't work past seven o'clock, those kinds of things. That's more what I'm looking towards to make sure that they're obviously getting enough adequate sleep. They don't have, we're not putting a strenuous thing on any type of homework because this does start at six o'clock. If they do have after-school activities, those kinds of things. So.
Kirk, what I hear you saying is we could maybe add something if we bring this back to policy about student members may be excused if the meeting is exceeding like say seven thirty, but are welcome to stay.
Absolutely. You all can put a time limit to it. You can put seven thirty or whatever feels comfortable to you all, I feel like, as a board.
I know, I know when we were talking about it in policy, we kind of just went with what the association had provided with the framework, but we did hash out at least one school board member in case there wasn't an upperclassman or underclassman or there was sickness or something like that. We just recovered with at least one representative. But yeah, I could see how seven thirty seems reasonable to me or eight, based on how long our meetings have been going.
Maybe we could reach that three hours.
You're very talkative, Kyle.
I was just going to stop talking.
It's not just Kyle.
It sounds like they're going to go relatively early in the meeting and they've already been excused anyway, so.
But they're actually, yes, I'm just, I'm more concerned like they're supposed to be treated like a regular board member without voting rights, the way that it's written, and RSA has nothing about timeframes in that aspect, which was very surprising to me. Yeah. Good intentions. Yeah. So I just want to make sure that we're not putting undue hardship on the student at this time.
I agree. I think that's a good idea. Maybe under student member expectations, we can say
more maiden foster to be more responsibilities.
I would put it under expectations.
I think so too. Expectations seems to fit. So we had two, two policies for first read, BBBF, which we're talking about right now, student board members. Would you like to send that back to the policy committee? Perfect. We're good? Okay. Great. Thank you. And the other first read was policy JH, attendance absenteeism intruency.
That was only the change of ALMA.
The bold parts are the changes to the policy, but.
I'm talking about it now. Yeah.
Yes. Policies for second read. First, we have policy IHBG, home education, instruction and access to curricular and co-curricular programs. We have suggested, or the policy committee is suggesting to adopt the sample policy offered from the School Boards Association. Policy JJJ, access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home education, home educated pupils. This is a policy that we did not have. It is required by law. And the policy committee has recommended that we adopt the school board association's recommended policy. Bless you.
Let it go. It's not healthy to hold it in. We don't mind.
Hey, it's not public comment, honey.
Policy IHBG-R, participation in public school activities by home educated charter and non-public pupils. This policy, we're, this policy committee is recommending to adopt the policy from the School Boards Association, policy JJ, three J's, dash R. It should be four.
One's replacing. So they provide you with the one that we're replacing also.
Oh, okay.
So.
So there's three of them that weren't proven.
JJJ dash R would replace IHBG dash R.
Yeah.
Correct.
I move to approve IHBG.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? I just wait a moment, Drew. Could you? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Neither am I. I just wait a minute because you'll look up and slowly raise your hand.
I move to approve policy JJJ.
Discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
I move to approve policy JJJ dash R, replacing current Guilford School District policy IHBG dash R.
Second.
Discussion?
All of these essentially are the NSBA verbiage. It's not been created or redone by the policy committee. It's mainly, that's what I was sort of reading through.
Well, they'll make, they'll make the recommendation and then the policy committee could make changes on top of that.
Right, right. But all of these appear to be pretty much the language that is recommended. And I think.
Right from the law.
I kind of heard that's what Kirk said. I thought.
Verifying.
Yep.
We have not always agreed with them. I'll put that out there. There are times where we've kept our own policy and not agreed.
Right. That's what I was sort of visioning for.
Yep. All those in favor? All those opposed? Extension. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Public comment the second time. Please state your name and your address. You guys know the drill. Does anybody would like to speak?
No. My name is not changed. It's still Skip, still from Guilford. And actually, no, I did not expect to be standing up a second time. But given the topic that was discussed about BLM, I probably have more experience with BLM than most of you here because I wrote about it a lot. And I will tell you that just off the top of my head, they start before they wiped their first version of their website, which I saved off, started by three openly Marxist, trained Marxist people. They are against the nuclear family. They were race-based as far as oppressors versus oppressed, promotion of reparations, promotion of quotas and defund the police, which I think Drew, you kind of alluded to earlier. I, we've had our run-ins with the person that was talked about earlier today. I have several writers who are down from that area. I think one thing that Kirk didn't tell you is that when there is a code of ethics, that's one thing, but there's also a philosophy. And every board has a different standing of philosophy. And we have seen changes over the nation where a board that leans this way has been changed to go the other way. Exeter is one of those that is very much in the DIE community. And that's why they have five, maybe six court cases against them right now because they have deviated from HB2, which was the law passed two sessions ago. I want to say divisive concepts, but it's not quite that. But it certainly goes to oppressors versus oppressed in different languages. And I will say that Mr., and I can't, I always forget how to say his last name too, but Andres Mahia. I'll stick with that for right now. There is a problem there and I think, I didn't know this was going to come up, but I figured I'd step up. If I still have it on my backup drive, I have almost 500 megabytes of their instructional materials they wanted placed into the classrooms. I saved off their entire website. It's not a pretty picture. It is political. It is also philosophical. And I would be hap, if I can find it, I'd be happy to share with it, share all of it with you as long as you folks have a place that I can upload it all to, fine and dandy. Otherwise, I'll put it in a Dropbox and give you access to it. It's a lot of reading. It will take you hours to go through it. It's not very nice in a lot of cases. So I will just throw that out there and leave it up to you folks to make up your own minds. However, I am going to reissue my right to know, which I sent out the first time when I heard about the Plymouth training. Because of this discussion tonight, I am going to write, do a right to know to include the agenda item and I want a copy of the materials. I will write that up tomorrow and I will send it to the school board. Because I think it's going to be very close to what would contravene all of the law within HB2. I will also say it's going to go against some of the ED rules. And I will state that Commissioner Frank Edelblum has been on a search for suspect districts exited being plain and out there in front on the DIE battlefield. And he has pulled a couple of certificates. So again, I'm going to tell you, be very cautious about this training. I wish it would be, be put off primarily. Secondarily, if you can postpone it until you can read more of their materials. Because now that they were open about it, now they're not as open about it, but still making the same pushes. And again, I've got writers for Granite Rock that are living this and have for years writing about it, about what's going on in that district. There's a reason why the superintendent and the school board have decided to part ways after this year. And let's just put it that way. Parents are ticked. I could use a bunch of other words, but I think that one's safe to use here. So I think, Kyle, you are correct about that. There are other districts, once again, because education is political, like it or not. They're not happy. I would not be happy if I found out that staff members who were then teaching my, my child were using this philosophy without my knowledge. Yeah. We already saw what happened before. I'd do it again. Okay? I don't believe that as I originally read about it, it should not be allowed here in Guilford. I congratulated the school board back then when they decided to turn down. Young ladies offered to bring in BLM materials into the district. And I believe that should happen again now. Just, I would ask as a parent to stay away from it. It's, it's insidious. Very smooth going in, but later on it takes root and it's not a good thing. And a lot of the nation is, is, a lot of school districts across the nation are in turmoil because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Anyone else?
I think speaking, public comment, Drew Taylor.
So, hey, how's it going? Chris Banks, now officially seventeen red up drive in Guilford, New Hampshire. So got home, homeowner, finally made it back home. Thank you again, all of you. Please don't hold it in. Let it out. Sneeze. I think you're doing it the right way. So make sure that we're in public comment now. I've got it covered. But yeah, for the, the point that, that I think the point of contention that we were talking about over here, Andreas Mahia would be the appropriate, I've known many Mahias throughout my military career. I think the big point I'd like to make on this one is waiting for information about the curriculum will not change that individual's political affiliation, their seat or whatever office it is that they hold within that political organization. So waiting out for the material won't change that or shouldn't really play into the consideration of whether or not to disinvite this individual. Waiting for the material would only play into whether or not you want the material to be presented, irrespective of whoever's presenting it. So I think that's as far as I, I'd have to say for comments of that. On the robotics side, Tara, please get with me offline outside of this. Part of my military transition has been with Rogue Space Systems. I believe they've done extensive work with the high school as well. So we just, yeah, yeah, he's working for us now. We just hired on an individual who was an Imagineer. He currently lives in California and he worked on the robotic Spider-Man that does the whole acrobatics outside of there. Works with artificial intelligence and robotics. Fantastic group. If you do have some more stuff that you want to tie in there, I do have an individual within our organization who can assist you in community outreach for, for outside of that. I want to say thank you again and we'll, we'll see if we can get you some tissues. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Being a former soundboard person for radio and for different events that we would attend and broadcast, I have three words. Eat the mic. Folks, I have tinnitus from working too long in data centers. Please pull those microphones really close. Kirk and Nen, you're really good. You're about two inches away. That's the way it should be so that we can hear. Because sometimes I can't hear you, Kyle. Audra, I can hardly hear you. Nicole, you tried to pull the mic in, but you've got a very soft voice. And Amy, I couldn't hear a word. So mic discipline, please, going forward.
Don't worry. It's getting pretty soon. I'm just going to attach headsets to them. You don't have to worry about that.
Plantronics work really well.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public.
Public comment, Drew Taylor, 166 Long Pond Road, Gilminton. Just a question on the calendar we voted on in December. I have lots of anecdotal feedback from a lot of Guilford residents as well as high school attendees from Gilminton about the Friday and Monday of the last vacation week. And if I had a dollar for every comment I heard about it, I'd have a lot of more dollars in my wallet. I'm guessing it has to do with the fact that Guilford starts post Labor Day and we talked about the calendar in the last meeting pretty extensively. And I understand the cohesiveness with other links, regions and Hewitt and all that. But being that Christmas I believe will fall on a Monday next year, you're going to have a similar juxtaposition of Friday, Tuesday. And I can't recall, I didn't. And I can't recall, I didn't have time to grab the calendar that we voted on last month, but I would encourage us to think about that, because there was a revolutionary ebb. And that includes staff members of Guilford that will not be named, but.
We were adding a disclaimer also to that calendar that it was more than likely going to change once we had the feedback.
That's why I wanted to bring up that point, so that if there's an opportunity to scrutinize that, I would suggest that.
We just can't do anything until they give us the finalization.
No problem. I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Thank you, Drew. Anyone else? All right, I will close public comment. And we'll entertain a motion for non-public.
I move to, I move into, to move into non-public, RSA 91-A3 Roman numeral to C.
Roll call?
Yes.
Voice, yes?
Yes.
Heyman, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.